Welcome, everyone. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, April 13, 2021. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So, who second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. As of five, all right? The Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The sole purpose of this meeting is for review of warrant articles fiscal year 2022. Gentlemen, we have a pamphlet Ms. Hebert has put together with a town accountant. Well, this is four. And a lot of these, in the beginning, I'm not going to go through all of them. They will be posted on our website prior to town meeting for review. But a lot of these are housekeeping. Number one. Number two. Number three is just a snow and ice removal deficit. Number four is housekeeping. Number five is for the Gulf Enterprise Fund. Number six is sewer enterprise fund. Number seven is for our cable access fund. Number eight is to apply for any state or federal grants. Number nine is to expend Chapter 90 funds. Allow Board of Selectmen to expend Chapter 90 funds. Number 10 is just authorize the town treasurer to borrow from time to time. And number 11 is where we really start off on the capital improvement budget to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds and otherwise provide the sums recommended or any other sum or sums for the capital improvement budget for the departments of the town as set forth in the following schedule and determine whether such sums will be provided by taxation or by transfer or by a combination thereof. In our first comment head that we have is Chief Chris Richmond from the Police Department. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Chief.
I have presented two articles, proposed articles. The first one is for $40,000 is to replace the computer servers that run the network within our police department. Just to give you some perspective, the servers that we're operating on now were purchased in summer of 2012, and they were brought with us from the old station to the new station. During an evaluation, we've come to find out the software that we're running needs to be upgraded, but the hardware will not support the software upgrade. So the software, the service software is approaching its end of life. It won't be receiving security updates and things of that nature. So obviously, it's kind of the lifeblood of the data in the police department. So that's where that is. We've, you know, the purchase was made, and then it was ahead of time of moving into the new building with the intention of trying to reduce the overall cost of the new building. But I would say, you know, going on nine years, 10 years, we've got our use out of them. The number 40,000, even though it's going to have to go out to bid, I enlisted the assistance by our IT vendor and came up with that amount. And we have a bid, what to put together, you know, a bid to put out. But that amount is a safe amount to cover the cost of the purchase, the configuration, the related software.
Very good.
And the second article is a larger article. It's actually been hanging around for a year or so. It's for to replace the portable radios and the radios that we have in the cruisers for a total sum of $107,000. Just to give the board and everyone else a little perspective, for Haven, Acushnet, and Matapoisette, we all share the same radio network. In spring of 2018, the decision to move forward to upgrade the radio system from primarily UHF to microwave, more robust microwave system to try to eliminate some of the dead spots that are both in, you know, in our town and in the surrounding towns. There was a commitment made. There was an article that was adopted to improve that infrastructure. The total project ended up being about $450,000, a little give or take, split between three departments to reconfigure and rebuild basically existing antennas and the existing network. Part of that agreement from 2018, I should say, was that once the network was complete, that each department will be responsible for purchasing radios that would be able to, capable of operating on the new network. Because we're upgrading the existing radios that we have and the existing radios that the other departments had at the time would not be able to operate on this new network. This article was originally on par for last year, but, you know, last year was last year with the town meeting. So we pulled it in the meantime for Haven and Matapoisette, you know, have procured those radios. So it's kind of revisiting us now where the network is, the radio network's done. So the cost, like I said, is covers the purchase installation configuration of cruiser radios for the 12 cruisers between unmarked and motorcycle and the purchase of 30 portable radios for the offices.
Very good.
Chief, what were the towns you mentioned again? Matapoisette?
Matapoisette, for Haven.
Okay.
Chief, just so you know, the board, we're only taking everything under advisement today.
Okay.
We'll be rescheduled on a meeting for tomorrow to vote on articles. So we're just going to listen to all the departments, the rationale behind things. Tomorrow, we'll be reconvening for another meeting to vote on. But thank you very much for coming and explaining that.
Okay, thank you. I'll be in your office tomorrow if there's any questions prior to.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Julie, we have Chief Gallagher coming. All right, we'll go. I think he spoke to these last week, no? When he was here, he'd remember been talking about the hose and some other things, no?
That's a lot.
That's fine. We'll jump right on. Jonathan, we've already discussed DPW under the town side. We had Mr. Manad in, and he was going to be on vacation. So we just listened to that thing. And number 12 is just a conditional for the loader. So we've been through that as well. Kelly Cosker, our principal assessor, is here. She has Article 13, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds to sum of $20,000 for the purpose of hiring a professional appraisal company for the comprehensive appraisals for industrial properties. Ms. Cosker, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. So the purpose the Board of Assessors put this article in for is exactly what I had written when I put the first request in. I feel, from my perspective, the industrial use real properties are not, for better choice, not getting assessed, but really need to be revisited. I had provided a list to you. I don't know if you've got it to the Board of Selectmen. There are four properties in town especially that I'd like to try to utilize this service for. As you all know, the town is predominantly residential, but if, to be fair and equitable as we are supposed to be, that is the mission statement of the assessors, we really need to try to look at those bigger parcels and bigger companies because they're industrial and see if we're actually allocating the appropriate equitable taxes from them. So from my perspective, as the municipal assessor, this would be a feat that would take several months just concentrating on that. That's why, for myself, and that is not my area of expertise, it is much more on the residential side as I have worked in a residential community. So that is the purpose for the request for these funds.
I understand. When we say industrial for the people at home, though, we only have really two industrial zones and one's kind of a fake one. So it's more of the larger commercial.
If, do you want me to share the specifics right now?
Slash industrial.
Would that be okay with everybody?
Sure.
I did provide it to Julie.
We didn't.
It was later in the day. One is the research and development parcel, Acushnet Company at the end of Manchester Lane. I think there's a lot of value there that's really not being captured.
Okay.
Another one would be Hopkington LNG on Peckham Road, the bigger parcel. I know they're putting in a big office space, there's a new permit going on there, but the actual tanks themselves and what is physically there, there's a lot on the ground there that is real property. And PJ Keating, of course, with, you know, it's been a contentious subject for the town and many other aspects, but to get an assessment that would be fair and equitable, that someone could actually substantiate other than myself and support if it was challenged, would be something to consider.
Totally understand. I think we talked about this several years back, Ms. Cosker.
We did.
I think it's a great idea that we do get somebody out there to do that for us because, as you said, your scope of expertise is not LNG and things of the like. So I appreciate you putting this effort in and actually coming out and doing it this way there, right? I know the Department of Public Utilities has actually challenged some assessments in other towns.
That's personal property.
In the DORs.
That's, this is totally for real estate appraisals. It would not be personal property appraisals.
So the one that's being talked about, the formula being talked about with the DOR and the Department of Public Utilities, the appeal that's going on now?
Basically, the long and short of that is historically, they accept a net book value. These companies have valued themselves, EverSource, for example. And as of fiscal 2022, the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, has requested that they actually itemize or inventory what they actually have and to get a better look of where this net value is coming from, because they feel there is a discrepancy and it hasn't been going on for so many years. I really think, in my opinion, it's a check and balance at this point.
Okay, very good.
And the second one is pretty straightforward, the implementation of the $25 FIFA certified butter's lists. The assessors, the assessing department has been doing this service as a courtesy, as part of our service to the petitioners or the taxpayers of the town. There has been a huge influx or increase of requests for butter's. As you know, the Planning Board and Conservation Commission are the two departments in town that usually require the notification of a butter's, and there's been a huge increase in it. As you all know, the Planning Board has many more cases to look at, as well as ZBA. I don't see too much of an increase on that side, but definitely Planning Board. And it is due for solar arrays. Those are the bigger projects that are coming through.
Anything requiring in the butter's list, you would collect a $25 fee.
Right. There's a protocol in place now. We had had some gray area on how to follow through. There's a template form that can be provided the petitioner, and they sign off on it agreeing that this is the information they are requesting from us, so there's no miscommunication or misunderstanding.
Okay. I'm just curious, why does that have to go to town meeting? Because I'm out of general law or?
Because we're at zero now, and we're actually implementing the fee. If it doesn't, it was unbeknown to me, but I'm really not sure. But I think it's because we're doing it as a courtesy now, it would have to go on a town meeting article to actually implement a fee.
Fair enough. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hebert, you want to speak on number 14?
Sure. So essentially, we've talked a lot about the town planner, and we do have a posting for a town planner right now. But in addition, there's been a lot of discussion lately about the town's zoning bylaws having a lot of contradictions within them. And while it is something that a town planner will be able to maintain, it seems that there's a lot of work to do on this, and we do have a lot of bylaw changes that are coming up on this warrant and in future warrants. And so the idea is something that actually I came up with in looking at other towns who are doing a similar proposal, hiring a consultant, the fees that other towns were looking at were in the range of $25,000. So that's what I put on here. And this would be to hire a consultant to review and update the town zoning bylaws, essentially to review them, make sure they're not contradicting to another bylaw that's already existing, kind of clean it up. And again, this is to try to be proactive, knowing that once we get a new planner in, it's probably going to take a while for he or she to get adjusted and kind of fill in their role where there's been nobody there for a while, and so at least we can get a head start on this.
Okay. Very good. And then Article 15 is to raise or appropriate from available funds or otherwise provide the sums recommended or any other sums or sums for the school capital improvement budget for the departments of the town as set forth in the following schedule and determine whether such sums will be provided by taxation or transfer, a combination of thereof. And this is pertaining, these are all for the school department. And then we have Sarah Gomes from the school committee, Kristen Flynn, the business manager, and Ms. Bailey, the superintendent of public schools. So I'll leave it over to whoever you want to get up and speak on your articles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm going to actually ask Mrs. Flynn to continue the conversation with you about these articles, but as you know, we've been reporting a surplus. So I'm hoping that some of the conversation tonight can focus on projects that we may be able to do now versus articles. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Flynn to go through the articles, but I think we need a little further discussion. We really want to collaborate and work together. You know, we're expecting to have a surplus. We're expecting to pay our bills and give money back, but we kind of would like some direction and guidelines from the board. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm just going to go through as I have them on my list here. If you want to talk about anyone in particular, any further, just let me know. So the first one I have listed is, again, like Chief Richmond said, a lot of these are repeats from last year. So there's only one new one, I believe, from last year that we deferred due to the pandemic. And there's one that's been on there for a couple of years, so I will note that. So the first one is one that we've come to for a few years. It's preventative maintenance on our roofs at both buildings, Ford Middle School and Acushnet Elementary School. We do have some leaks that require some attention throughout the school year. This year, we've been pretty fortunate, but we have expended the funds that's currently in that article, so we're just asking to fund it for about $15,000. So that's that for the preventative maintenance on the school roofs for both buildings.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that $15,000 for preventative maintenance, you don't have anything left over in any existing articles? It's all been expended?
It's all been expended, yes, correct. We expended it primarily on the schematic design phase of the roof renovation, roof replacement project, on the OPM and on the architect designer.
Okay, very good.
So right now, any roofer pairs that we have is coming out of the local budget right now, but I don't believe we've had any recently. The next one is also from last year to upgrade our remaining security cameras that are analog to digital. And Mr. Oliver, our technology director, is working with vendors right now to get some quotes. We're anticipating about $17,000. And as Dr. Bailey said, this could be a project that, based on timing and funding, we could do before the fiscal year ends. The funds are relatively low, and it's a project that school closes on June 17th. So we really have an issue with timing of when things can happen. So a lot of these projects can't happen while school is in session. So we have to either do them starting when school closes or defer it to the summer. And then deferring it to the summer would be next fiscal year. So it's kind of a balance with funding and timing and availability. So that's to upgrade our remaining security cameras. The next one is new. Our Director of Facilities, I believe this is the only new one, is requesting a utility work vehicle, a gator, and that's for about $18,000. Now, right now, we have one vehicle for the school department. It's a pickup truck. And up until yesterday, for most of the, you know, I'd say November, December, until now, in the bed of that truck is the sander. So it's pretty much rendered useless for doing, for moving materials from building to building, for picking up materials, for doing any landscaping. For example, we just had a request to clean up a lot of leaves around a fence that kids were playing at, and there's ticks. So we really need something to collect big branches, to go to the back of the woods, to also, if we could get a plow on it, to plow our walkways, to get those done faster than what our custodians could do with snow blowers. So it would be a multipurpose vehicle that we would be able to use throughout the course of the year. And that one, again, is a new one. And this one, you know, this would be a simple purchase off the state contract, most likely. So this is something that we could pretty much go ahead and accomplish before the end of the fiscal year. The next one is the rooftop antenna replacement. This we've had on at least since last year. And this one is not something we can do this year because this would go in coordination with the roof replacement at AES. So this would have to take place after July 1. We're looking, we got a quote for about $18,000 for that, and that's to replace the roof, the antenna that's on the elementary school. It's pretty old, pretty much original to the building. It needs to be replaced. And it currently has a radio repeater system attached to it, as well as two DPW antennas. So if we had a new tower, we could add other communications equipment that might perhaps benefit other town departments as well. So it is original to the building, and it's in need of replacement.
Can I ask a question about the antenna?
Yes.
When we were discussing the school roof for the Acushnet Elementary School, there was some discussion around, I think it was with Mr. Merritt, that maybe that antenna get moved to a ground antenna instead of being a roof antenna. Has that been contemplated anymore?
I don't believe so, no. I don't, I don't think so.
I just replacing the roof antenna before the roof is done? You wouldn't want to put a new antenna up?
No, so that's correct.
Have a roof installed, having somebody else taking our antenna down and then have to be responsible for putting it back up? It's a lot more.
Right. So that's why.
Labor cost.
Had to be part of the whole roof project, even though it's not part of the scope of the project. This would have to work in collaboration with it. So it's not something that we would do now, right? If we're not going to go out and buy a rooftop antenna now, put it up on the roof only to have it taken down when the roof construction is. So this is something that we would have to defer until FY '22.
Just, can you tell what's the purpose of the antenna?
It provides communications. Like right now, we've got some DPW antennas on there, and it's a radio repeater so that that way, right now, so that our radios can reach throughout the town. So in other words, if.
So truly, not, I mean, this isn't really a school.
It's for the shared.
This is shared.
Right. It would benefit other departments as well. So.
You do use the antenna, though.
Yes, yes. So it helps, before we had, before we put that repeater on there, if I recall, communication between the two buildings on the radios, say, Dr. Bailey needed to radio over to the elementary school, or they needed a quick assistance, or the school resource officer, it was not as clear as it could be. So we put a repeater on there, and at the same time, it also allows for clearer communication from the school to the police department, to the town hall. So say, for example, Dr. Bailey needed to reach Mr. Oliver, and he was here, he could hear that radio. If he's driving or one of us is driving throughout the town, we could hear that radio call. So it's really just for improved communication.
I think it's a good idea. I'm just going to, I mean, this was put in place, right, before cell phones? I'm just asking the question, like, can we not use cell phones to communicate with people or the antenna? If the antenna is what we need, so be it as a backup or whatever. But it just seems like if this was put in when the building was built, 1970, whatever, right?
Correct. I know there's some.
But you guys rely on the radios, and we all, as town departments, we do.
Yes. We do rely on the radios, and you're correct, sometimes it's appropriate to use a cellphone, but sometimes when you just need to get off a quick communication, that radio is right there. And I do know that the antenna also helps with something that the DPW.
For our water systems.
Something like that, correct.
It's got like a little repeater on it as well. That's how we communicate with a lot of meter reads in that general area. That's how we pick them up.
And I do know, when we first started talking about this, the effort was to get a taller antenna to see over the sightline, to be tall enough to do what it needs to do throughout the town.
Okay. Thank you.
The next one is driver repair. This is just to continue, you know, replacing and repairing the roadways of the school. We do still have some funds in that account right now. I believe it's around $30,000. So we put in $19,000 just to fill back up to what we had expended. I know that we rely on the DPW to help us out with some of these, and we're hoping that we can, our next effort was to do the roadway behind Ford Middle School from where the buses are parked, all the way up to the sewer pump. And then we've got a lot of cracks that needed to be sealed, reseal it. So really, the whole campus needs to be done, but this is just kind of like every year we try to do something to help it. And that was also left over from last year. The next one is carpet and tile replacement. This is something that we started to do a little bit this year, but again, we're kind of beholden to school vacation schedules, especially in classrooms. When we were remote in December for a period of time, we replaced some tile that really needed to be replaced at the elementary school. And right now, we mostly have repairs of areas of tile here and there. So not necessarily an entire classroom, but areas of tile here and there. So this is something that pending time, we could get a few done in June. However, it would be nice to have an article to be able to address things as they come up after July 1. So right now, like I said, we're taking care, we've taken care of some small areas, just under $10,000 with some money that we have this year. But we're just putting this into, you know, as a placeholder, hopefully for next year because we don't know what our budget will be and what the situation will be next year. The next one, again, is left over from last year to replace the roof condensers at Ford Middle School. If you remember, I believe, two or three years ago, we replaced them at the elementary school, and these work with our refrigerators and freezers in the kitchens. I'm not sure if you have the updated one, but we recently, we've gone out to quote for these. So if that's something that we could do this year, we'll be ready come June 17th. So again, this is one that we could get done this year. So we've gone out, the quotes are due April 22nd. And based on what I'm seeing, I had originally put in for $30,000, but I think we can lower that to $20,900. I don't think it will be more than that, but until I get those quotes due next week, I won't know for sure. Okay?
You said those are for cafeteria, not air conditioning units?
No, they, for the cafeteria, yep, for the freezers and refrigerators in the caf.
Thank you.
You know, I think when we had come, the elementary school, those were the ones that needed it the most at the time, but we also knew that Ford would be needing it, and we have had some repairs over the years. So we're getting to the point that it's either we keep repairing them or replace them. Okay, the next one is the dark fiber installation. That'll connect Middle Road to the police department for $60,000. Mr. Oliver had put this in a couple of years ago as well. And so what he's looking for is to purchase dark fiber and to attach it to the utility poles down Middle Road, connecting the schools to the police department. And he said this would allow for interoperability with security, phones, servers, internet, and PA system. So again, something to enhance communication between the school department and the police department and maybe perhaps other departments. I'm going to skip over curriculum because I'll call on Dr. Bailey to talk about that one. The next one is what we, this was from a few years ago. This is really, this one is pretty important. We would have liked to have replaced this gymnasium caf wall a few years ago. So again, we're asking for it again. It's, the quote is for about $84,000, and it would be an electrical, it's a wall that you probably haven't noticed it because when you've come to the schools, the wall between the gym and the caf has been open for town meeting. We have a wall that closes it off so that students, you know, in normal times would be eating in the caf and not disturbed by the students in PE. So the one, the wall that we have is not mechanical. It is, it is old, original to probably the renovation. It's, you know, we have been leaving it open out of necessity because, for spacing, and also because we really, you know, it is time to replace it. It is ripped, it's torn. I don't think that it's to the point of being totally dangerous, but we also don't want to be opening and closing it, you know, throughout the day. So we would like to, the doors do not open or lock properly, and the wall is ripped. So these things can be quite expensive. I know when we talked about this two years ago, it was, you know, it's surprising how much it is. This, I don't believe, is something we can take care of this year, unfortunately.
I have a quick question. Thank you. These capital improvements are contingent upon finishing or securing a pressure order? So like this wall here? We can approach a company and. Um, we can approach a company and say, hey, we want it, we got it, you know, I've come to an agreement on the price and pay for it this year and then it takes until August?
Um, yes and no, because if we, right now I have a bid out because it's over fifty thousand. So we had to do an invitation for bid. Those sealed bids are due April twenty-second. So at that point in time, next week, we'll know who the low bidder is and how much it's going to cost. Um, however, we've been advised that the lead time for the materials, we're looking at fourteen to eighteen weeks, if we order by May first. So we have a couple of issues, right? So we have our bidder, we have our vendor. In order to use the money we have this year, the project has to be, you know, I, I know Julie spoke to it at another meeting. It has to be, i- at least started and somewhat completed, correct?
Yeah, supplies, supplies and services ordered, um, or, you know, a project that's at least been started for like the labor cost.
So what defines the starting of the process? Is it, as Mr. DeRoche said, is it securing a vendor and is that starting the process?
Given a down payment? I mean, is that?
It could be, if you have a contract. I mean, I think at least for the DOR sake, they want to see that you're not just encumbering money and using it whenever you want to. You have, you at least have to have a good effort that you've um, purchased, you know, looked to purchase the, the supplies or start the, you know, the process of um, doing the service, if it's labor work, so.
Mrs. Golds would like to say something?
Yes, just, um, I've spoken with other towns in our area and it is very difficult for a school district to get big projects done because we only have certain amount of times where the children are not in schools. Um, so the selectmen have allowed the school departments to give a little leeway, like maybe like August fifteenth or something, to get a project of this magnitude done as long as all the documentation was in place. So that's what I'm here for, is to ask, is there some sort of consideration that you are able to give us to complete some of these through the summer due to COVID and delays and all of that information? If we have all the paperwork in order and the project just can't start just logistically, could we continue that over the summer? Using this fiscal budget and not the next one? And that would remove a considerable amount of.
I, I would think like that, if you guys, if you're able to do the bid and get like a contract together, but it's a matter of like, I, I mean, if the supplies are taking that long to get ordered, I'm assuming it's COVID related, right? I mean, no one buys furniture right now either because people are so far out. Um, I mean, I would, I, and you know, some of this is molested to the accountant, but I would say as long as you have a contract that's secured and you've done the bid and it's just a matter of, um, you know, the supplies may not be in in time, I think that would still be fine to encumber the money for.
Yeah, I think, I, to talk about that a little bit, I mean, to extend the deadline, I think that's, that's a great concept for certain things. I mean, I wouldn't want to take all your surplus because I know there's a considerable amount of school surplus this year. Um, and carry it over for thirty or sixty days, but as far as the capital purchases go, I would argue that if you've gone through the procurement part, we'll call it, right? Putting out the bids, part of the procurement and you secure the bid and you get an invoice from your vendor, would you say you have a vendor? And we know that the curtain, we've talked about the curtain for a couple of years, Kristin, that it is, you know, you, it's, it's mounted to the ceiling and you drag it across the floor and it kind of connects into the floor. I would argue that if you take the curtain, the existing curtain that you're not using and you're keeping the room open now, I would argue that if you started that and you yanked that curtain down, the project's pretty much in line with everything that we've just talked about and it's only about hanging the curtain once it comes in, right? So I would say, go for it.
The only thing with that is that we wouldn't be able to take down the wall unless the students were outside of, right? So we wouldn't really be able to start.
Yeah, but you, one time, I mean, you close school and if we extended the deadline, say that's what it required, was the board of selectmen to extend the deadline of fifteen or twenty-one days or thirty days, whatever, for these kind of purposes and have that X percentage of dollars to carry over from your surplus to be used for capital purchases? I personally wouldn't have any, any problem with that to, to close that loophole. I mean, it's, you're, you're doing the work, the kids will be out of school, you can get the vendor to come in, pull the curtain down. So the, the job has been processed, everything's been audited. It's just basically getting the new curtain in and hanging it and finishing off the job. So fifty percent of the job is taking the curtain down, the other fifty is putting a new one up. Mr. DeRoche, you had questions earlier, I don't want to.
Well, just one comment that Kristin said, it takes fourteen to sixteen, fourteen to eighteen weeks.
That's what the vendor, one of the vendors had said, that it's fourteen to eighteen weeks for lead times. And everything will change after May first, he said. I'm not sure exactly why, but his email to me says, everything changes after May first. So we have the bid, I think, we have the bid that's due on April twenty-second. Um, we've had some interest in it. So once we open the bids, presumably we will have a vendor. And that will be before that May first date, um, to get things ordered. But again, that's fourteen to eighteen weeks. Now, um, our issue is, you know, how many weeks do we have until school reopens on, in August?
Right.
So it may be that, you know, and I, I don't know, I just want to provide all the information at the outset so that, you know, everyone is aware. If that's, if we don't make the, you know, August, whatever, seventeenth deadline, then the next opportunity to install this thing won't be until the Christmas break, if that's enough time for the construction. So I just want to, you know, make everyone aware of that, that this unfortunately is a more complicated project.
So I think just to, to what I'm hearing is that Sarah on behalf of the school committee is asking the board for essentially, not a waiver, but just to look at these requests, to see if this mind that can be carried over, right? So I think to be consistent before we make that decision tonight, we've got the request that's come in. We can look at this overall picture. I'd like to find out, maybe if you can just tell us what would fall into that category? It sounds like the wall, there's a few other things, if you can just delineate that to us. And then we, tomorrow when we look at the whole picture, we can vote on whether to allow this dispensation and or what projects would fall into that, if that's fair?
That's exact, thank you.
Okay.
So the final one that I have is just the special education stabilization fund. Um, that was started a few weeks, a few years ago. So we took some money and put it into the special education stabilization fund. A so-called rainy day fund for unanticipated special education expenses. Um, fortunately, we haven't had to use it. I do believe it requires a vote of the school committee and the board of selectmen to withdraw the funds from it. Um, two years ago, I believe it was, we used town meeting funds, um, town meeting voted. And last year we did a transfer from our budget at the end of the year. So, um, right now we have it listed for a town meeting, but that is something that could be further discussed as well.
For, I think that the vote that you just talked about being in school committee and board of selectmen is to, to withdraw funds from the current?
To withdraw funds from what's currently in the fund.
And this is just a vote of town to allocate more funds to it? So what, what is currently in the fund to date?
I want to say it's about two hundred thousand, one fifty to two hundred, I can double check that, but I think it's two hundred.
Yep.
Is there a cap on that? Is like?
It's a percentage of.
Yeah, so it's two percent of the net school spending, so, um, I looked up what next year's is projected to be and it, it was like fourteen million something, so I think when I did it out, it was like two hundred ninety-eight thousand something, so. It might be a little less than a hundred thousand, but we can keep up with that.
Where, where would the money be transferred to?
To the special education stabilization fund, it's a special um, fund in the town.
For the school, purposely for special ed? So if they get a, a transfer in that's unexpected?
Right.
They have somewhere to go as a reserve to pull that money from and provide that education for that child, so.
Because at times that can be a quite substantial amount of money?
It could, it could be, um, especially if we're talking about a private placement, um, and not a collaborative placement, so.
Chairman, I just have one ques- just a, I'm trying to like shake off the rust from being away for a while. Just tell me, does the school committee have a policy of procedures for like line item transfers? Um, at the end of the year, I want to say, I think we have something in place for like anything line item transfers in the month of June through July or May through July that's going to go to the finance committee?
Yeah, for the town, it's um, May first, um, through July fifteenth. It has to be provided by the finance committee and the board of selectmen.
Does the school department have that same?
That for the town, that's not for the school.
So the practice of the school department has always been, um, all of our budget is separated by the Department of Ed, um, codes, the function codes, that's how we report. So for example, anything that's instructional related is a two thousand code. So you might have teacher salaries, you might have um, textbooks and materials, things like that. Um, anything that is facilities is a four thousand code, so custodians, four thousand code. So say for example, the principal of the elementary school wanted to transfer one thousand dollars from their um, math textbook account to their English textbook account, to make it simple. They would fill out a transfer form, I have the authority to approve those. I do it, I make a copy and it goes on the next school committee agenda for review. Now say for example, we need to transfer funds, we have some funds in instruction, um, in the two thousand account, okay? And we need to use those, and we do this at the end of the year a lot of times. Needs to be transferred to the maintenance and facilities because we're always in a deficit for that. So now we have a two thousand, we want to transfer money from the two thousand account to the four thousand account. That requires school committee review and approval, okay?
Okay.
So something that is like unlike, right? So you don't want to, you know, and each one is when the school committee, um, review and approval, it's discussed at the school committee meeting and a formal vote is taken.
So there's like, yeah, my point is just, there's multiple layers of oversight and especially at the end of the month, at the end of, at the end of the fiscal.
We have the, we have the budget subcommittee as well as the committee.
Okay, great, thank you.
So that's um, all I have. I know, Mr. Warner, you had wanted a um, synopsis of what could be done this year versus next year. So I can either, you know, get that to you tomorrow or I can just review it real quickly again because I know I went through it quickly as I went down the list.
Excuse me, Kristin, can we discuss that at our subcommittee meeting that we're having right after this?
Yeah, why don't you guys bring us the complete picture tomorrow, tomorrow, that'd be great. So we meet, I think we're scheduled three thirty?
Three thirty tomorrow.
So if you can get that over to us and then we could just take a peek at that, sooner the better. To Ms. Heba, she can forward it to the individual board members, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
So the last thing is the curriculum, the seventy-five thousand dollars. That is more like a savings to continue to build that up should we need it. As you know, the district has needed a lot of curriculum adoption in every single content area at both schools. And we can't do it all at once, but to gi- to give you an example of the cost of one content area for the elementary school, we were looking at an ELA program and it's over two hundred thousand dollars at one given time. So this seventy-five thousand dollars, it's not particularly earmarked for anything, but we thought it was just an amount to kind of build up a savings, if you would. Should we, we are going to eventually need it, um, but we're trying to build it up because it goes very quickly, like we've done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you currently carry money in your budget for curriculum?
We just, we're proposing it this year, so that's new. And we, we also have money in the budget for consumables, things that, that workbooks that the children need yearly. So that's accounted for and we do have a proposal in our budget for new curriculum.
And last year, we, I think we fell short a little bit on funding the curriculum. There was three different areas of curriculum the school had made a request for and I think we fell short maybe fifteen, eighteen thousand bucks, if my memory serves me correct, somewhere around there, Kristin would know?
Yeah, I believe about seventy-seven thousand was approved for the fall town meeting and it was approved for two specific things. Um, I'm not su- I don't recall exactly how much they asked for.
For the third one, that was a little bit less, but we didn't get to complete the full funding for that a little bit.
For this, we don't want to be specific. Um, we just want to build it up so that as we decide as a committee, a- as the stakeholders at the school department say, you know, science is next, that's our next priority, we want to be able to go to money. And again, we don't know what our budget is going to look like yet. We did try to put money in this year for new curriculum so that we wouldn't always have to rely on this. But I think it's good to have this should we need it and especially if our budget is caught.
So that by, by creating this sort of escrow account, it allows you to be a little more agile during the school year to make decisions, not having to wait till either a fall town meeting or a spring town meeting.
Correct.
You're ready to make a decision in.
Sometimes with curriculum, there's a sense of urgency and to wait for a town meeting and not know whether or not it's going to be approved when our kids need it and they can't have a redo of third grade or seventh grade, they need things, you know, we don't want to waste a year with our children, so.
You're saying moving forward, you're looking to go, you know, to see how you can maybe build it into your budget?
That's what we're trying to do.
Police department with our cruisers, right? We know that every year we're going to try to replenish those, I just want to get my head around.
Yeah, so.
You know, you're moving forward with this.
The school district has not really had an active adoption cycle. And right now, over the next few years, it's going to take a lot more at the beginning. And then what we hope to have happen is a regular cycle of curriculum adoption where we're only looking at one content area a year versus we're trying to do so much over the next several years because it's so outdated.
So this is, this is, to make it clear, because I think, I've gone on some questions about the curriculum things happening at the school, but um, I think I had a conversation with Kristin. This is, it's not necessarily new curriculum that you're trying to implement and teach. It's some of the curriculum that's, let's use an example, old textbook stuff that you would teach in and that's kind of outdated to the newer stuff, or is this all new curriculum above and beyond all the things that are already being taught?
So it's, it's not the new standards, so the standards is what we have to teach. The curriculum is the program by the means of teaching that, those standards. But it is new in the sense that we're looking at high quality, research-based curriculum that we don't have in a cushionette. We're looking, um, we're looking at green rated curriculum, research-based. So we want the best curriculum for our kids, rigorous, that will best meet those standards. Right now, we had a curriculum audit done a couple of years ago. Our current curriculum does not meet that green rating, um, through curate, through Department of Ed, through Ed reports. Um, so that's, we're, we're looking to really up our game with curriculum and have the very best curriculum for our students that is rigorous and quality.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeRoche.
Uh, Dr. Bailey, is there any estimate of, uh, deployment will take to, to achieve the standard of the curriculum that we need? Is this a process over the next two years, over the next five years? Is it ever evolving?
Could you repeat the first part of your question, I didn't hear it?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there any timeline, when do you think the curriculum can be met and brought up to the standard that you said? We were audited and went below the standard.
Mm-hmm.
What, what's the process to get up to the standard?
So we, we will know that once we get a green rated curriculum, that will be the curriculum that's green rated. So we have a high, in other words, we're going to put the right tools in the teacher's hands to teach. And the hope is that our, the children's test scores go up, um, and they're more successful. Um, we're looking at intervention programs right now, but we have a team of people working really hard right now to make it happen for our students and so that they are successful.
Okay.
So to say there's a specific timeline, we go year to year. We look at comparing our own test scores and always, you know, trying to increase that. We look at the state, but then we look at comparable school districts, um, so that we can be the best we can be.
Ms. Golds?
Can I add, I'd like to add to that, you know, as a parent and a regular community member and somebody who's not in the educational realm, it takes time, okay? This, this will not happen next year where our students will all be learning new math, better math, better English, better science or history. Um, it'll take probably, in my opinion, just seeing how this is all rolling out, several years for it to come out where our kids are comfortable and, and well-adjusted to the surrounding communities that we have around us. Um, and then what will happen is, is with the curriculum in the budget, we'll keep updating it every couple of years so we don't have a ten-year span where we didn't do anything. We don't want that to happen anymore, so that's, that's the game plan. But to your, answer your question, it takes, it's going to take a couple of years.
And with all this new curriculum, there's digital licenses involved now and there's extensive training for the teachers. Um, and that's also included in the pricing, so it is expensive, but we do get a lot with it. And now that we are a one-to-one district, we do need updated curriculum with the digital licenses as well. we do need updated curriculum with the digital licenses as well.
Gasp, sorry to proclaim, but I'm just curious, so, like, with a lot of businesses, this pandemic has exposed business models or whatever, I'm just curious as to, are there any things that you were forced to do because of the pandemic that you thought, you know, that you've now said, this might be a good thing to carry over, and, you know, things that you've seen or practices, just curious from a parent's standpoint, but, you know, I think the viewers might be interested in that as well.
Absolutely, so that's something we're definitely going to be reviewing with our teachers, but I can tell you, first and foremost, the technology, training that our teachers have had, we've had weekly professional development on all kinds of different technology tools to use, we've seen it carried over with our students in their presentations, so we think those are really important, essential life skills that the students are getting, but now that the teachers, I don't see any of that stopping. And I do think, I mean, this year, it's changed the way we look at days off and snow days, there's certain circumstances that we have been able to have children learn from home remotely, if the circumstances are appropriate, so that is a big change. But I think, most importantly, instead of me answering that question, what we will do is go back and reflect on the year with our entire staff, and get their input, you know, what do we wanna keep? Because I don't see it ever going back to pre-COVID, exactly the way it was. We have, you know, increased our skill set, we've built our capacity, and we want to continue to do that, and I think, you know, these are life skills that our kids will have.
Good, thank you, very good.
I think we'll know how curriculum's working out when we see the proficiency of our students increase, right?
Absolutely.
I've heard, I watched one of your meetings, I think it was with Finn Con, and I was just coming back from vacation, and I apologize for missing that meeting, but we've talked about it in the previous year, when our reading proficiency was way down, and things of the like, and I think that that's really, for the school committee and the administration to really think about is, you know, some people would say, our school departments, that's our waterfront property, right? That's what, that's why people come to Acushnet, is because they expect a good education, because that's what we're known for, so I think that that's the bar we need to keep raising, and making sure that proficiency of our students stays high, to prepare them for high school and then college after that, so. I know there was a little bit of dissatisfaction with some of the proficiencies that are being taught there, and the, and the students being at a low proficiency, so I, I guess that's the, the gauge of success, is raising that proficiency, and that's how we'll be measuring that year over year, and things of the like, right?
Well, I think you can create the argument, is that, well, you know, book proficiency, I think there's some degree of resilience, proficiency, maturity, and, you know, like, these kids have had to deal with a lot of things thrown at them, that they wouldn't have, and I'd be, those, those are some intangibles that are hard to quantify with N-CAS, or whatever, I just, you know, I think that's part of the equation, which I think will be a pretty fascinating social dynamic.
Absolutely.
People look back on, you know?
Absolutely, but we're, our leadership team is very committed, paying attention, and we have high expectations, and we consider the school department the gem of, of the town, it really truly is, and we're honored, I'm honored to lead the district.
Thank you, appreciate your time, thank you, Ms. Flynn, as always, Ms. Golds, thank you very much for your time. So, don't forget about us tomorrow, okay?
Oh, top of mind.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And seventeen is just the stormwater management bylaw, there's some updates to it, it gives a little Appendix A, we have Merrill Lee here, if she wants to discuss that quickly with the board, I mean, it's in the Appendix A, the changes, very insignificant, Ms. Merrill Lee?
It's, it's, it's very simple changes, there, it takes the threshold from five thousand square feet and moves it up to forty thousand square feet, so that if you're clearing five thousand square feet, you don't have to get a stormwater permit anymore, so.
Yep, there's, there's a quick, few little punchlines for things like paving, or if somebody's doing a driveway, that was pretty stringent, it was five thousand, goes to ten thousand, construction of a new drainage, alteration of drainage, serving a drainage area of more than, it goes over to ten thousand instead of five thousand, so, and then the threshold of the altering of the surface, we use the, I think it was the Wetlands Protection Act, I think, a DEP standard, it was five thousand, very stringent, and we bumped that to any land disturbance over forty thousand, which is almost any per of land.
Right.
So, that we're not crippling everybody in the community with a stormwater bylaw.
Right, exactly.
On that's a fence since two thousand and seven, so, I don't, I don't see much there, I, I appreciate the amendment to the bylaw, that's for sure.
And, Mr. Chair, I believe forty thousand square feet, well, I believe a house lot has to be sixty thousand square feet outside of the.
One, one five acres, is it correct?
Yeah, outside of the, and forty thousand upland for a buildable, so I'm, I'm okay with the forty thousand square feet.
Yep, yep, I think that's what, we had this reviewed by our town's engineering company, Conco, I believe, took a look at this?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so I believe this is something, this is more of a template that more municipalities are using versus not using, so, it's great. All right, and Merrill Lee, you've taken care of eighteen as well, that's the floodplain overlay, and I know this was supposed to be done last year, but because of COVID-19, things have been changed around.
The floodplain overlay district?
Yeah, it's Article eighteen.
Basically gives us the, the, puts the date and the panels that we use, so that we can stay in the National Flood Insurance Program.
That's correct.
So that.
Last year, it was kinda like a hurry up and do it, because if you didn't do it, and something accident, say we had an hurricane, and people did end up experiencing flood, that would, we only really have a floodplain by the riverfront, right?
Right.
And then there was some, from, I think it was FEMA that does this, they were saying, oh, if you're not, you don't update it, but then some rules changed right at the last minute, we had to pull it.
Exactly, exactly, it was right at the last minute, so now they're saying, okay, get it done by July sixth.
Yeah, it's a nice story, they, hey, there's thirty days left in the year, hurry up, get this done, and tell me it's already behind you, it's too late, but it's, we do this every few years, several years anyway, right?
Right, whenever they tell us to.
Yeah, they keep changing that floodplain and killing people with flood insurance, but it is what it is. And then, there was some, I thought.
Twenty-five?
There was something in here, yeah, there was something in here to see if, surface water, something about surface water.
Yeah, it's Article twenty-five, the groundwater overlay, groundwater protections overlay district.
Yeah, Merrill, yeah, I, I'm just gonna, I just wanna ask you one question on, on this groundwater protection overlay district, I, I, I'm somewhat familiar with stormwater and things of the like, after I've been doing a lot of research on this, but I don't know if the town of Acushnet really needs a groundwater protection overlay district, as we don't have wells.
We don't, no, but we, there is one that belongs to Fairhaven on Long Plain Road in Matapoisette, and so some of their zone two around that comes into Acushnet, so, so that was the reason, the Department of Water Head over there, actually, from Fairhaven, came over one day and said, you know, you need to do this, so, I don't know that we need to do it this year, but at some point, I think we're, we're gonna need to do that, to protect that zone two.
Yeah, we should, we should look into that and get a little better explanation, isn't that, you said it's down there, isn't that, didn't we do something, I think it was with the Coalition several years back, they bought some property back there.
On Matapoisette Road?
Yeah, I think it was out that way, yeah, we, and there was something about the Matapoisette Fairhaven watershed, and, and we've, I think we foregoed our right of first refusal, so that the Buzzards Bay of Coalition would buy it.
They do have some property over there.
And then they sold some property off, house lots off.
We gave them like permission to buy, buy a house lot, I mean, sell a house lot off of the old, whole posable there.
Yeah, there was like either one house lot, two house lots, or three house lots, something like that, to protect that area over there.
Right, that was the New Boston Road area?
Yep.
I think so.
Matapoisette and New Boston Road, correct, correct.
If, if, if you could, because if we say we don't really have to do this this year, that'd be great, if we don't, just because town meeting, I'd like to keep the, the discussion as much as we could with vetting articles, anything that's gonna be long and exhaustive, I, I don't think it's a great idea under COVID, restraining, we have a lot of articles to blow through, then we have to go through the budget, so, you know, anything that might cause some concern or controversy, as we said in the past, if it's not something that necessarily needs to be done, I would prefer not to do it.
And I agree with Mr. Chairman, if we do have, assuming, you know, we've got an article that we're considering to hire somebody to come in and look at all of our bylaws, we get a pretty beefy bylaw considerations, we might be better off just pumping the brakes on that, and then come after this stuff, once the study's done, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, we gotta listen, we gotta listen to people, right? And we, we try to do our best to listen to people anyway, and do our own due diligence, but I think this is, you know, Fairhaven's coming in and saying, hey, you need to do something about that, you know? First, first thing I would say is, hey, Fairhaven, how much money you flocking over to us to do this kinda thing, if all we're doing is protecting your water source, right? So, I mean, you know, we, they're a good neighbor, Fairhaven, love the town, just, you know, I'd be cautious having somebody else trying to dictate to us what we're doing here, and we need a better understanding of, and I don't think if, if the board of selectmen don't really fully grasp it and understand it, how are we gonna vet this to our residents on town meeting floor easily and understandably far than, with all kinds of confusion and people all like, ah?
Well, I, I agree, I think that there's a lot at this town meeting coming up, and it may very well open up people.
Well, Chairman, in that vein, could we ask Julie to circle back, because we're gonna come back at this tomorrow? Ask Julie to circle back with the staff, and analogize this, the things that we think we absolutely have to have, versus would like to have, and if we can thin this thing out a little bit more, especially.
There's a few in here, we could, we could definitely skin it.
You know, because if we're gonna hire a consultant, I think that's the direction we wanna go, you know, a town meeting, or with CARES, not CARES funding, but this other funding.
Yep.
I agree, I think it's a great concept, to do these things, I just think would be counterproductive.
Yeah.
Yeah, voted in, voted in this year to have a change next year, or a year after, right?
That it doesn't really fit in the puzzle.
Oh, right, and having that district, if that's all it is, let's figure it out.
Well, it, it also covers wells, public wells in town, you know, so that, there's a couple places that have public wells.
Really? We got, oh, sorry.
Public, public wells at, what do you mean, public wells? We don't, we don't have any municipal water from public wells.
We don't have any municipal water, but we, there are about six or seven places in town that have wells that serve more than twenty-five people, and, and those need to be protected as well.
Really?
So, yes.
Like, one well feeds twenty-five households, is that what you're saying?
Right, for instance, at the trailer parks.
I didn't know that, where is it?
There's, there's one in each of the trailer parks.
Oh, there you go.
There's some.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't realize that, but it's interesting to know that.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple.
So, they, you know, here I go, I'll open the can up, so anybody who is serving water to multiple families, right, it requires a permit and things of the like, they have to go through.
Yes.
So, I didn't realize that, but they help to a higher standard in, of regular threshold, like Selectman, DeRoche, Selectman won, they have their own private well, they don't have to do that, but if you're serving, or if you own, like, say, the Mole Home, you have to have your water tested, just like a municipality would, because you're technically a public utility.
Right, and the, and the board of health is in touch with all those people, so I'm sure that they are certified.
All right, excellent, thank you, I don't think you have anything else, right, Merrill Lee?
No, I don't.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Yeah, so we did that, nineteen, it's a zoning change, this is the common driveway, Mr. Merritt came in and vetted this out a little bit, there's been some controversy in, between the Old Town Planner and Mr. Merritt, and this interpretation, it was vetted a while ago to the board of selectmen, we can discuss it more tomorrow, Mr. Merritt probably will come in, even though we will be asking for some of these articles that could possibly wait to wait, I don't know if this be one, I think it needs to be corrected sooner rather than later, it's pretty simple in, in text, and to see if the town will vote, general bylaws, again, another one, this one here, no material or supply shall be stored or permitted to remain on any portion of the property outside of a building constructed, any finished products or semi-finished products stored on the property outside of the building shall be confined to the rear half of the property, and shall be appropriately screened from all sides, but shall in no instance be placed on the side of the building paralleling an existing or proposed street, no waste material or refuse shall be dumped upon and permitting, or permitted to remain upon the, any part of the said property outside of a building constructed therein, and that's pretty much in the residential aid district, business village district, and the, there's another district.
Residential aid?
Residential aid, business village district, and there's business village, business district, there's a business village district and a business district. So, that's what that is, I think that that one could be one, maybe, perhaps, as Selectman won suggested, well, well, the next one's an upland circle.
I need to get a description of what that is.
Attending to that, the next two, twenty-two and twenty-three are also under purview, one of them says, eliminating, he wants to just eliminate light manufacturing out of one of a, out of the residential district, he wants to eliminate subsection thirteen, light manufacturing and renumbering those items, which follows, not much controversy on that one. Twenty-three is something that I've discussed, and the definition, it was taken out of the definition, part of our bylaws, it says, to see if the town will vote to amend the Acushnet general bylaw zoning, Article one point two, definitions for a street or way as follows, street or way, and the only thing that we're doing is somewhere, in two thousand and eight, our bylaw book had the requirement of having a minimum pavement width of twenty-two feet, and a minimum layout width of thirty feet, in two thousand and fifteen, somehow, some way, it was taken out of the definition of street or way, and I think that's extremely dangerous, and I think Mr. Merritt may have made a comment to Ms. Hebert, saying that he might have been the one that took it out of the definition, because it was in the subdivision rules and regs, and control laws, however, we know that the planning board did waive paving of a subdivision street that was changed to a subdivision, so I have asked why, and, and the things of the like, and just putting that back in, so that paving cannot be waived in a subdivision on a street or way, like it was in the old days, which is two thousand and eight bylaw book. So, that one's pretty self-explanatory, to see if the town will vote and amend the Acushnet general bylaws, soil conservation bylaw, as shown in Appendix C, or take any other action relative thereto, I believe, I believe this is the soil board.
That's correct.
Appendix C, I believe this is taking out the soil board itself, and replacing it with a board, so Ms. Hebert, you want to give, give us a quick update on this?
Yeah, so essentially, you know, taking, getting rid of the board, in, in lieu of that board, it would just be the board of selectmen is essentially the soil conservation board. There are some additional definitions that are put in, there are a few, I mean, I, I know our soil enforcement officer did a lot of work on this, along with our town council, so, there are a few other adjustments that have been put in there, update for the, the bonds, that's a decent amount, yeah.
Chairman, I'd like to call to your attention the Section nine violations?
Section nine, section nine, section nine violations?
Yep, I think that's, I think that's an important piece, you know, something that we can do, I guess, by law, by, we can do it now, but by having it codified and memorialized, is something I think is, is good for the town.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeRoche?
The soil conservation board has really only been an advisory board to the board of selectmen, is that correct? So, their, their voting policies are just advisory to the board of selectmen, so it doesn't have any teeth or sparseness.
But I think it sounds, I've served on that board, I think it gives, you might as well just cut out the middleman, you know, like, it's, it gives like a, a false sense of authority, I think, it makes sense, we can call these folks in, you know, this professional staff to help us make decisions, but I think, makes sense.
Okay. Okay. So, twenty-six is to see if the town will vote to amend the Tishkina bylaws. This is a, a new article for conservation. There's only one problem, guys. We don't, we don't even have a, we don't even have a conservation bylaw. So, we need to create a whole new bylaw governing. So, it goes back to what Selectmen won't have suggested is this would have to kind of be a wait-and-hold kind of thing until we get our arms wrapped around a better actual conservation bylaw. Twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote on the Mass General Laws, chapter forty-one, section one ten A, to authorize the town clerk's office to remain closed on, on any or all Saturdays. And where the last day of, for performance of any act in such office falls on Saturday when said office is closed, the act may be performed on the next succeeding business day or take any other action relative there too. So, this'll be interesting to see how she would handle elections, if elections are gonna continue to be on Saturday.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I, I emailed her. PM, PM is in the building. She's alone, so she wasn't able to come, but I did email her and ask her. She gave me a response already. It's okay, I'll read it to you guys.
Sure.
So, she said, "The article would have no impact on Saturday elections. The primary reason for the article is related to voter registration and nomination slash petition filing. Currently, the office is required to be open on Saturdays until eight PM on certain voter dates. However, since I offer Tuesday evening hours weekly, residents slash voters have every opportunity to visit the office, and I have had no foot traffic at all on the Saturdays." I hope that helps. So, she can come tomorrow too as well, but that was your explanation.
I think that's fine. She can explain it on time. I mean, I don't have a problem with it being there. It's just, as long as election day will be election day on Saturdays, because there was a lot of controversy a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Any, twenty-eight, we already went over it. That was with Kelly. The Board of Assessors are looking for a twenty-five buck certified butters list. I think it's a great idea. Twenty-nine, to see if the town will reserve from the Community Preservation Fund. Estimated revenues, the sum of ten thousand sixty-seven for administrative expenses, ten percent for open space purposes, the amount of twenty thousand one thirty-three, ten percent for historical preservation, the same amount, twenty thousand one thirty-three. And affordable housing, the same ten percent, twenty thousand one thirty-three. And the remaining hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine for fiscal year twenty-two, Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve. So, that's basically a housekeeping one that we always have on there. Thirty is to see if the town will vote to transfer an appropriate sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Act Funds Account and/or the fiscal year twenty-two budgeted reserves of the Community Preservation Act Funds for the purpose of improving and rebuilding the soccer fields at the Akushina Elementary School located at eight hundred Middle Road, all pursuant to the Community Preservation Act for recreational purposes. So, we've done, over the years, we, we did the soccer fields at Mr. Wonna. You were a big proponent of that, getting those soccer fields. And I know I have been as well in supporting soccer fields over there. And I think that this is more of an extension.
Phase two, so I don't, check out, you gotta check out the first part of it. It's really, it came out beautiful. And this would be phase two to continue from in front of the tennis courts, essentially, to down where the buses are. And Dan can do it in-house with in-house staff, materials. And then that project will be done, irrigation, all of the above. It's just, it's a real gem for the community.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I mean, it's great that we found a place for our kids for the EYSA to play. So, I've been an avid supporter of Kuschna Youth Athletics. So, you know, a lot of kids, you know how many kids play in soccer?
There's, I mean, last year with the pandemic was weird, but I remember at the time prior to, the number was like close to eight hundred in total. And it was close to like five hundred Kuschna residents, Kuschna kids.
That's why we put the parking lot in the front of the schools, because they were all on the street. We had to get them off the street. That's how many people, families were out there. I mean, it's incredible, it really is. So, we did that additional parking area from, I think it's like sixty, sixty, seventy cars, whatever it may be. The next one is for Community Preservation, ten thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance for the repairing and resurfacing of basketball courts at Pope Park. That's also a Community Preservation Act Fund. So, it looks like they're, they're gonna do some resurfacing of the basketball courts, as you know. Asphalt don't last forever. You know, it's a little hard to play ball on a bumpy court. Not any of that is, you know, I don't wanna trip, I'm getting old. So, that being that, thirty-two is pretty much a housekeeping one. It's Cemetery Board to perform work. Thirty-three is to see if the town will vote to authorize Board, authorize the members of Recreation Commission to perform work at the park and allow, and allow the Board of Selectmen to term compensation. It's Housekeeping Article thirty-four. These are all our revolving funds, gentlemen. It's pretty much redundancy year over year. Julie, nothing's changed on this, on this side. The only thing that's changed is the, we're looking to add on Article thirty-five. But nothing's changed on the amounts for the first, for Article thirty-four, right?
That's right.
It's basically public library, gentlemen, Conservation Park and Recreation Council on Asian. It's a redundancy, every year we do it. So, they have some money to fund out of things that they sell and get rid of and raise capital. They have a little extra money to do things that they need to do. Thirty-five would be a new one. We discussed this a little bit with Dan before, to see if the town will vote to amend Town Akushina General Bylaws by adding a new fund to the table in Article twenty-one, to authorize revolving funds for the use by certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, and other offices on the Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three E in one half, as follows. So, basically, it's just added Department of Public Works as a new revolving fund for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The program activity and expenses payable from the fund would be maintenance, costs, supplies, equipment, contracted services relating to recycling center operations. So, this is really for, it's, it's Department of Public Works to be able to expend the funds, but it's really under the recycling category for things that, like, when we, you know, we charge, you know, we call it ten bucks, whatever it is, for a couch and things of the like. That'll go into this revolving fund, and they'll be able to expense certain things when they need to use. Like, they have an article for the crushing operations for recycling this year. We, we said not budget it. If they have the money, they don't have to work, wait, and have everything pile up out there. If Dan needs the machine for a couple of days, it's five thousand bucks a day. He's got ten grand, he can just spend it out of that and get that crushing done and over it. Cause there are times where DPW needs materials to go, perhaps, to the soccer fields and put grain down, and that material's not ready. So, that'll allow them to have that flexibility. And it's basically fixing that amount, the maximum, for ten thousand bucks. Thirty-six, see if the town, that's Library Board of Trustees, sell, sell this kind of books for a buck. It's housekeeping. Thirty-seven is a new one, to see if the town will vote to establish an Infrastructure Capital Expense Stabilization Fund, established on the Mass General Laws, chapter forty, section five B, effective for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-one, and transfer from available funds to sums and, in sums of money into said fund. So, this is basically creating a, a new capital expense stabilization fund. Ms. Hebert and I have, have been talking, due to the nature of free cash, we do have, hate to say excessive free cash, but there's, there's more free cash than normal due to last year's COVID pandemic and things that we were budgeting for. And we actually got to use CARES Act money for, remember, we got in the amount of somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars in CARES Act money, right, Ms. Hebert? So, we were able to accumulate more free cash from that year onto this year due to the nature of COVID-19 and the things that we got reimbursements for. So, there's, there's an excessive amount. We do have, there is an article to put two hundred in our regular stabilization account. Ms. Hebert, I, I think you gave us a new updated, we're over the three million threshold now in our regular stabilization.
Yep.
So, in the old days, they, you know, the DOR liked to see ten percent of the town's overall budget in stabilization as a rainy day fund. We've been pretty fortunate as a, as a community, not to have to dip into stabilization much. And if we did, it was small increments, so we never had to go and take out two million bucks and just, and blow the whole savings book. This is basically setting up another stabilization, but for infrastructure costs. And you remember when Dan was in here, we talked about using an extra hundred thousand dollars from XIs to get out and pave more streets, cause our roads are getting blown up. I actually went down a street today. It's Marmen Street off Middle Road. I took a picture of the street.
Funny you should say that. I was on that road the other day. I couldn't believe it.
It's, it's, I got pictures on my phone. I mean, they, they went and put some, some top coat stuff inside of it. And, and, and I know that our, our guys are trying to do the right thing in keeping potholes, because people complain, but man, we're, I drive a lot, around a lot of these side roads, and, and we're just, we're losing roads fast, and, and we really, real, I can't emphasize how much we really need to concentrate on getting it done, and whether it be through our DPW, that road, like Wilbur Road, they went in and did a total reclamation for like, I'm just gonna round it up. I think it was like forty thousand bucks. Or a regular paving from outsourcing, it would cost us the same amount. And we actually went and ripped up the whole road, reapplied surface underneath of it, the gravel underneath of it, so it would stay and it wouldn't do all of this stuff. So, our DPW, we brought the paving machine. We're ready to go and, and do all of, a lot of these little side streets. We did Marion and Mason off of Burke Street, off of Burke Street. We're not geared up, and I, and I'm perfectly fine with saying, I think Dan would say it too. We don't have enough experience yet with the new paving machine. However, we do a great job with the new paving machine. We're ready to do all these side streets, and we got more side streets than main arteries. When it comes to the main artery, we're gonna have to have a real firm, big firm, come in and just blast it and get it done, i.e. Slocum Street. I mean, we're not, we're, we're not gonna do that road. I don't believe for a minute we would ever do that road. So, you know, we're geared up, and I think that this is, this is a good thing, an infrastructure capital expense. And hopefully, that'll, Town Meeting members, if the Board agrees to put it on Town Meeting, Town Meeting members agree to doing it as well, so we can continue to reinvest in this annuity. But that's, that's basically what that is. It's creation of a new Infrastructure Capital Expense Stabilization Fund. And I'd like to thank Ms. Hebert for working on that with me and really taking that concept and putting it on paper and endorsement. So, thank you, Ms. Hebert, for that. The OPEB Trust Fund is a hundred grand to allocate there. If so, choose. That's Article thirty-eight. Article thirty-nine is a, it's basically transferring money into the Regular Stabilization Fund. It's just a housekeeping article that's always there. And Article forty is to see if the town will adopt the resolution outlining Appendix E of this document, and it just, it's a resolution to thank everybody who has served in the past. Is that correct, Ms. Hebert?
Yeah, and people who served and left in calendar year twenty. It's an article that we've done every year since I've been here, so just keeping it alive.
Just keeping it alive. And after that, it's just, do we have, do we have, who said Appendix E?
Yeah, I don't have the names yet. I'm gonna get them from, usually does not-
Yeah, that's fine, it doesn't matter. So, gentlemen, that's, that's, that's that.
That is-
You guys are getting better. We're getting better.
So, I think, you know, we heard that the department heads, other than Mr. Merritt, I get Ms. Labonte, so we don't need to have her come. I'm, I'm fine with what she's, what she's, what you read in the email. I think the only one that we're missing is Jim. And I think Selectmen Wonna, we, we talked about it. So, if there's any ones that, you know, we can discuss, I think it says Board of Selectmen Planning Board, if there's any of those that we can discuss. I like to keep the definition of street and way back on. It's pretty basic, cut and dry for that purpose. But any, everything else, if you have, guys have any, I know we only have tomorrow morning and in a couple hours, and even, Mr. Merritt will be in tomorrow?
Yep, he'll be in tomorrow.
So, anything that you guys wanna ask questions to, if you need to talk to? And can you just make sure that the school department's meeting tonight, if they circulate a document via email to you tonight?
Yep.
If you can get it out to the board members, so that we can see what's going on there?
I will.
Get our hands around all of that, and I think that's pretty much it. We got, um, do you have any other questions, concerns, comments on the articles, gentlemen, tomorrow?
Uh, no, I think Jim will answer some questions. If I have anything on that soil board, I can call Pat, and we'll get an answer from him. And, and we'll discuss it all and move it all through. Things through tomorrow.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
And the only other thing that we have here is fiscal year twenty-two budget discussions slash COLAs for non-union personnel. What do you wanna discuss, Ms. Hebert?
Well, I will mention to you, I just gave you all a change for the budget. Oak Colony certified their budget. They started out high, they dropped to about fifty-six thousand, and then they just upped it again, twenty-eight thousand, so.
So, in net, minus thirty-ish?
Yeah.
Well, we got, that's, that's an increase of thirty grand to their budget? Cause you added it here somewhere. I think you put, you put it on the fixed cost. I, I, I think inside the budget presentation that you did for us, right? You gave us a updated one? And I think it says, uh, significant. So, on the fiscal year twenty-two fixed cost, you put Oak Colony's regional increase to tuition assessment, but that's-
Yeah, let me give you the new one.
Really not fixed cost, pensions and insurance and things of the like. Can I ask you a question about, several people, including myself, as business owners, we've experienced an exorbitant increase in the Department of Unemployment Assurance. Insurance, like huge. Did we from the town? Because I didn't see that big increase in your line item, but speaking with many of my friends in the business community, including myself, I know our obligation went up significantly. I'm talking not five hundred or a thousand bucks, like you were paying, say, a thousand bucks last year, and you're paying three thousand, four thousand this year. And I guess it's all because of, you know, all the unemployment checks that we sent out and things of the like, but I mean, that, that's, that's insane. Did we experience that here in town?
So, municipalities are different. We get billed, we don't have, pay a portion, like a percentage, from payroll checks. We pay claims as they come in. And so, it has been a rough year for us in the sense that there's been a lot of fraud. So, when the government came out and said, you know, we'll do unemployment and we'll get you your check right away, a lot of nasty people out there decided to file false claims under people's names. And again, their, their intent was to get the check up to people right away. So, oftentimes, the check would go to that fraudulent claimer, and it took a week or two for the person who, whose name it was under to find out that, you know, get something in the mail saying, oh, just, you know, we saw that you had your claim, your money's been sent, but give us your info. So, it would, it would take a long time before it kind of got corrected. So, on our end, our Treasurer Collector's Office manages all of the unemployment claims that come in, and she's had to deal with a lot of fraudulent claims and not only, you know, reaching out to employees where their name shows up on the list and making sure that it wasn't fraud, but then also, you know, working with the state to rectify it. Because a lot of times, even after we said, you know, this is fraud and it's confirmed fraud, it's still showing up on the bill. So, as one can imagine, I think all the unemployment departments across the state and country were overwhelmed with that, the thought and fixing it, so.
So, you're, you're saying that we might be overpaying as business owners? We might be paying, overpaying in that line?
Yeah, you could be. So, so again, for us, it's a little bit different. I, I think we have had a lot of increases lately, and that's why we went from thirty thousand to fifty. And I, I do know a lot of the unemployment claims that we've had in the recent, you know, the last few years have been school-related, and the town does cover the school's portion of unemployment currently. So, and again, we pay directly, so, you know, we're not paying our, our percentage. We're paying, if it's somebody who's, you know, a high earner, we're paying, you know, their full thirty thousand dollar, you know, unemployment, unemployment check. And just to go back, cause we were talking about Oak Colony, did that increase from what they certified to what we had last year? It is two hundred and ninety-three thousand eight, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So, just short of three hundred thousand dollar increase.
What did, what did we have here in the update, Julie? We, we had a number, it was pretty close to that number.
Yeah, that was right before, they just gave me that update today, so.
So, they, we had an increase in tuition assessment inside of our presentation that you had given the Board, two sixty-five, five thirty-six. What's the new number?
Two ninety-three, eight eight eight.
That's a big pill to swallow.
Yeah. And I agree, it's not really a fixed cost, but it is in the sense that, you know, once they certify, we don't have a whole lot of what it runs, but we can deal with it.
And the, you wanna talk about, it says COLAs for non-union personnel?
I know it was brought up in- I know it was brought up in one of the last meetings. So we haven't taken an official vote on the COLAs. So that's, I, I put it on here in case you wanted to vote on that.
Just curious as to what the conversation, did you have a congress? Are we taking a vote? I'm just curious as to, was there a dialogue? Was there any conversation with the employees or?
I mean, I've, I've talked to the, most of the employees in this category are department heads. And, you know, they're, they're happy, they're not gonna complain about a raise. You know, they're happy to take whatever. But I will say, you know, on behalf of them, the department heads are people who didn't quit throughout the whole pandemic. You know, so not like this is, we're in a tough situation because there's an economic world we're living in. But if any of this is merit-based, I hope, you know, you know that this doesn't reflect how they've worked throughout the pandemic. Because they've put in, you know, remote, remote days, remote weeks. They work from home, they work late. So, I mean, so yeah, so they're, they're understanding that you're in a tough situation. But, you know, obviously, they, they would want more if they could.
So, Mr. Chairman? Are you saying, Julie, are we gonna, are we gonna consider one and a half percent or two percent? That, that difference, do you got a number on what a difference of a?
A half a percent, I mean, it's, it's gonna be under ten thousand dollars.
You know, so.
Is this something that, I mean, past practice, can we revisit this tomorrow?
Yeah.
Normally, we set, we set, we set the bar at what we believe we can afford. And again, it's so difficult because everything's been skewed because of, you look at some of the articles and where we're at, and I'll have a little conversation tomorrow about the budget. Cause I need, I don't wanna talk prematurely with Ms. Hebert tonight in an open meeting, but I have some reservations about the budget numbers in general, free cash and things of the like. So I wanna get that vetted with Ms. Hebert like we have been doing upstairs in the back room before we discuss things on camera. But normally, you only have so much capacity to give.
Correct.
And then by giving department heads, you know, let's just call it two percent. And then the unions are gonna say, well, you gave department heads. And that's always the tug of war, being in this seat for a while. I've learned all of that, it's always that tug of war and, you know. So you're looking at it and say, well, it's only two percent of department heads. But then, once you negotiate that and you give certain things, and it's, it's expected everywhere. And that's where the conflict usually comes back up. But, you know, I put a lot of thought into the very, we don't have a lot of department heads, right? So, and we've talked about, and there's been a lot of different talk. And there's so many different things that the government talks about, pay inequality and pay equity and trying to figure out what this is versus what that is. And, and, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I, from my perspective, you look at somebody who's making a hundred thousand dollars and I'll just use, I'm not gonna put any name on it. Somebody making a hundred thousand bucks, you give them two, two percent, they get two thousand dollars. Somebody making fifty thousand dollars and you give them two percent, they only get a thousand bucks. And how do I, I know for a fact that I would say that I could easily say that the fifty thousand dollar employee deserves the two thousand bucks. And, and the hundred thousand dollar employee might only deserve the thousand bucks. So that's, that's where you kinda get tangled up with everybody trying to be equal to. I think that's been a false myth in, in government. It's not the way it's done in private sector, for sure. I know that for, for a fact. That's not the way it's done. It's, it's based on who you are and what you bring to the table and how hard you work and how you perform for the corporation, right? Depends on what kind of raise you're gonna get. And I've seen people in, in multi-billion dollar corporations that I've worked for get zero and the other guy gets five percent. It is what it is, you know? But it's just one of those, it's, it's, it's a crappy conversation to have. You know, we gotta, I would, would have preferred to have, Julie, you talked about trying to get ASME done, the union done because of the wage class and maybe getting them to agree to something. I would have liked to have gotten that done and out of the way. And then the only ones who are holding over is DPW and, and police. But I, I, I'll defer till tomorrow and then maybe we can have a little bit more conversation. So we'll just leave the agenda the way it is again.
Yeah.
So we're meeting tomorrow at three thirty, correct?
Yes.
So everybody's, all the department heads are still on the clock?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I think we owe it to our department heads if we can have them here. Cause we are gonna be talking about the budget. I think one, I think we owe it to them to recognize what Julie just said, right? Throughout COVID, we're going through a lot of stuff. I think at a minimum, we need to recognize their diligence and their work, but also have a conversation about what we're trying to achieve from a budget standpoint, whether it's one and a half, two percent, I'm not sure. But I think, I think we owe it to our department heads to, to show a debt of gratitude, but also to provide with them a big picture of what we're trying to accomplish here. So if you could make that happen. Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you, at three thirty, we can have them here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty good with it. I know, whatever they wanna say, I mean, we'll, we'll figure it out. I, I, I just, it just sucks because we don't have much time, right? And I would, I would, I would, I would have, you know, in the contracts for department heads, it says that they'll, we'll address them by a date of March or the month of March or whatever. And I, I wish that would have occurred. And we could have had, you know, that dialogue individually in executive session. Cause we did approve, well, I didn't approve, a wage classification, but we might have been able to apply that. We've done several in the past, big bumps to certain department heads. So, you know, that's something that you're always gonna look back on and say, well, you know, I understand. But, you know, look at, you got a twenty thousand dollar raise two years ago, guy or girl. You know what I mean? Give me a break. So it's just one of those things that I, I feel it's always best vetted in executive session first and decision.
I thought we had, right? I mean, I thought we did do that, we had parameters. And I thought we had a, a plan in place. So, you know, anyway, I think tomorrow we'll have a better, better, better idea of what the budget looks like.
Let's figure it out, we'll talk to Julie and the board, you guys can, you know, maybe we don't need to, you know, we bring in all our department heads, we're gonna be here for an hour and a half, two hours.
Well, it's not a wrap, I mean, it's a five-minute thing, right? You don't have to say for the whole thing. I just, again, I think to recognize, acknowledge what Julie said. I think there's an opportunity here to say thank you for the work they've done. Then we can move on, it's not.
Very good. Julie, there, there are certain people that have contracts already in place that are still, so we don't need to have them come, right?
Yeah, there are a few, yeah.
I mean, if we just wanna say, if we think about it, hey, thanks and, you know, great work and things of that nature. I mean, that's, that's fine. It's always good to say thank you.
Hand you an envelope of cash?
You want one?
It's good work.
So, do you have anything else?
I have something under Town Administrators Report that came up today, just to mention. Actually, this is kinda old, but Lisa mentioned it to me because she talked to Jolene from O'Colony. And we have member appointments that we need to do. There was one from last year, but because of COVID, we never got to have the joint meeting with the school committee. And is it the finance committee, Lisa?
Um, no, time moderator and.
Time moderator.
Board spokesman, no moderator, and the school.
And the school committee. So last year, there was an appointment that we should have done for twenty and there's a new one for FY twenty-one. The people who were in those positions, both did take out papers to be renominated, but I think typically we'll ask if there, if there are any other people who want to apply to be.
This is, this is, that one's just.
Yeah, Justin Broder had a term that expired in twenty twenty. And again, everyone was in COVID, so O'Colony understood this too, that there was no means to have a meeting.
Is this all, is this, you, you talked about another, is there anybody else outside of O'Colony appointments?
No, just, just O'Colony. So, but they had one, Justin Broder had a term that expired in twenty twenty. So there was one seat open for twenty twenty. And then if you look, there's also Maurice Seanamond.
Seanamond, yeah.
Seanamond, sorry, um, whose term expired is in twenty twenty-one. So there are two openings. And technically, we need to have the, the joint meeting to appoint somebody. I think both did some.
Oh, that's right, disappointment with the moderator and the school committee, right?
Can we do it like that just before town meeting when everybody's there? Does this have to happen now?
I, I think we can set it for whenever works. That would be, that would be, but I think.
He's right, everybody's gonna be there. The school committee will be there, well, they should be there.
With moderator.
The moderator's already there, the board of selectmen are there.
Just do it right beforehand.
We could just, if you could just, you know, make a meeting like, you know, whatever. What time do we start in town meeting?
Seven, so like a half hour.
Six forty-five, this is two seconds.
Yeah, but I, I think typically we just let the public know too, so if there are any people who, who are interested. I know these two did take out papers.
Is, is, is Mr. Broder, I, I know Justin Broder, did he, did he submit a letter of interest to be reappointed?
Yes.
Has he been active? In other words, we appoint people, but we don't wanna be appointing people that they're absenteeism. They show up for one meeting a year and that's it. So we wanna check on that, right?
I can check with Jolene at, at O'Colony. I can check with Jolene.
Can you check with Jolene? Because O'Colony, obviously, we know that we have an increase of almost three hundred thousand dollars in their budget and nobody's come in other than O'Colony once everything's been done. And I know we usually have a finance committee member that's the liaison for O'Colony, cause I was that guy for a long time.
Yeah, who was?
So we could have got a heads up saying, hey, you know, we're gonna get pounded. We could have done some preparation a little bit earlier and looked at different things with it and not be surprised by the increase. But Mo Seanamond, I, I, he's been, he's been on the O'Colony Committee for a long time.
Yes.
I mean, he was on when I was, I was on the FinCon as a liaison. That's between two thousand five and ten. So that's how long Mo's been around. Very familiar with a vocational school and that's usually what you're looking for. So if we're satisfied, Ms. Hebert, just so you know, I mean, if it's been somebody in this capacity and we've been satisfied, we don't usually advertise for.
Okay.
Letters of interest if, as long as the school, if Lisa talks to Jolene, you know, their attendance is good and they've been active participants.
Yep.
As members, usually the board will select them, right? We're pretty good, we're just reappointing and it's, it's easy enough.
Okay.
That's, that works, it sounds good.
That's all I have.
And that's it? Okay, gentlemen, tomorrow, three thirty, we meet again. Julie, if you wanna just leave the, just copy the agenda, if the agenda's not a duplicate from today, maybe leave budget discussions on there again because we're gonna talk a little bit about that again in the COLAs. If we wanna plug that number in, just leave the agenda the way it is. If we, we talk about things, we talk about things. If we don't, we don't. But leave it the way it is and we'll blow right through it. And hopefully, my two colleagues will come in with a loaded pen and ready to strike and we'll get through it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So we'll second.
All of the fail?
Aye.
Very much, we are now adjourned.